Thank you everyone for coming tonight. We're a little shorthanded. Two of our members are, one's recovering from surgery and one is rather ill. We have the chairman's report. He wanted me to let you know that the new bucket truck that the town approved has come in. It's having its final details put on it, but it should meet this in the town. And the trees along the town road is much simpler, so we're very excited about that. We have a $300 gift to the World War II Memorial donation. I can have the motions accepted. All those in favor? And we have a $5,150 donation to the police department. All those in favor? And I think writing letters of thanks, even though the chief has done that to both the donors, I think a letter from the selectmen is appropriate as well. Moving on to new business. We have a request for public property use, special permit, museum of Old Newbury, banner on the backstop, and townwide lawn signs from May 24, 2019 through June 10, 2019 to advertise the 39th Annual Garden Tour Saturday, June 8, and Sunday, June 9. Is there anyone here who would like to talk about that?
I'm here. It's actually the 40th. I don't know about my mistake. It's the 40th Annual Garden Tour, not the 39th, so this is a big year for us.
Fantastic.
And it's just something this Dorple Society does every year, so we do, we've asked for the backstop, although we don't know if we'll use it, we decided to do that anyway. And Ellen has told me that they need to be down the day after the garden tour is over, so Saturday and Sunday will be the garden tour, and all the road signs and the signs will be down by Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Wish you the best of success.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Request for public property use, special permits, Kristen Drake, Byfield, Newbury, Baseball Softball League, use of the upper green, Monday, April 1, 2019 through Thursday, August 15, 2019, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
We have discussion on this second.
Yes, discussion.
It looks like these dates, she's got it from Monday, April 1, 2019, and the garden club has it May 24.
They're just using the backstop. This is Little League.
Oh, this is to use the field. I'm sorry. That was good news. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've had a number of things advertised on the backstop at the same time, but this is to use the fields. And in the past, we've discussed the fact that they need to be open to other people using them when they're not actively in use. They get the whole time so they can schedule, and when they're not scheduled, everyone else has bad access to the upper green. Kristen, are you here? Do you want to talk about the Little League at all? I see you out there.
She's ill.
Oh, she's ill as well. Wash your hands, everybody. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Request for public property use, special permit, Rich Morell, U Can Sport LLC, three 5K road races, starting and finishing in Newbury Court, briefly passing through Newbury, Sunday, May 19, 2019, July 14, 2019, September 8, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Rich, are you here?
Hey.
Come on in.
I'm Rich Morell, and I organize the 5K races. I also organize the Parker River Half, which is probably on your list as well. We've been doing them for a couple of years now. The 5K race is mostly in Newbury Court, but it does pass into Newbury off of Scotland Road, where runners go down Livingston and turn around and go back to Newbury Court. Happy to talk about the Parker River Half, while I'm up with the bikes. That one starts and finishes at Tryton and heads down to Main Street, and then the runners take Moody Street out into Westernbury, and then do a loop, and turn around and come back. We've been doing that one for three years now, so hopefully we can continue to do them. That's why I'm here today.
Sounds good. And your organization is just a running club or?
Yeah, something that I centered it back in 2011. I'm there participating in a bunch of races. I decided to start organizing my own.
Any further questions, Drew?
Just the police is thoroughly notifying. Absolutely. Yeah, the help, I remember that was a little confusing the last time, so.
They're a huge help, the Newbury Police and the Westernbury Police as well.
All right, thank you.
Wish you the best of luck with them.
Thank you for the help. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right. Further discussion?
No, end of discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Request for public property use, special permit, Rich Morell, U Can Sport LLC, Parker River Half Marathon, Saturday, October 6, 2019, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Any discussion? All those in favor? Review and approve commercial plan permit application, 2018-19 season, Jared Dodge, Byfield, Kentway, license number 17AB69. Want to read this one? No, I'm wondering, we haven't voted on it, so this is a commercial permit. I've written Pete, but I don't see him here. It seemed like the application was complete to me. Didn't have if he was a master digger or not on it, and I was a little confused by Yeah, that was my feeling. I just, I hoped to hear from him before the meeting, so I guess I'd like to conditionally approve this hearing from Pete that the application is fully in order.
Okay, so move.
All those in favor? Appointment of election workers for the term 3/26/2019 through 12/31/2019. I think it's to approve the whole list of them.
Alexander Burr.
Ah, she doesn't name. Alexander Burr, thank you.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor? Vote to sign amendment of the conservation restriction for the trustees of Colby Village Condemnation Trust.
I have some questions.
Get the motion first, then we'll discuss.
All right, can we move to, you vote to sign the amendment of the conservation restriction for the trustees of Colby Village Condemnation Trust.
All right, discussion.
So what is, I wasn't, kind of unclear as to what we were signing and to why we were signing it.
Well, we got the perfect one, yeah. If you'd like to speak to this, please do.
What is this in reference to the foundation?
Amendment to the conservation restriction for Colby.
That's for the foundation?
Yes.
Yes, okay. What it is, Alicia, because some time ago, the project was developed, it was an ancient, ancient, how tall was the foundation of the house? Where a house used to be of the entire park. And when it was taken down, the foundation was left made of brick, and it collapsed away with surely. The association has had a responsibility of maintaining that, but at this point, it's not worth maintaining. So what we'd like to do is change the conservation restriction, remove that issue on the board, so they can say, no, we don't have to deal with that anymore, and take it down.
And then will the restriction come back after it's removed?
The only restriction is to remove the foundation.
Okay.
And remove it, then restriction is gone. Everything else stays as it stands.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
As we talked about this, we said, you know, it's an old foundation.
If you want, that's a planning, that was a planning board restriction put on originally, but the Conservation Commission got to hold the conservation restriction. So we've already put this by the conservation restriction, we've signed off on it. It now goes to you for sign off, and then I believe it goes to the secretary, so.
Okay.
You have no issue?
No, we've already, the commission has addressed it, we've held a public meeting on it, and we've signed off on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, unless there's further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Since the town administrator is on vacation, I think her report will be that she's having fun. This is just terrible. In old business, we have to vote to sign the malt and wine liquor license for Bob Lobster LLC. ABC approved, 3/18/2019.
I'm going to sign it.
You're going to have to second it.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
I'm going to stand on my thing that it should have a full inside bathroom, okay? So I'm standing still with that.
Very good. We can, JR can sign it, and Jeff can sign it later.
So we need, we've already approved it.
It's been approved at a meeting where everyone wasn't attended, so we're going to vote to sign it, and they'll come in and sign it later. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And I'd say we are at the time to open our public hearing, our first public hearing.
Hi, Fred. Think I'm bad if I put a chair here?
Think I could put a chair?
So, do you want to read that? The board's selectman is continuing the special permit hearing, considering the application for the modification of the special permit, the Newbury Golf Center, 131, 133, 151 Scotland Road, assessors map R43 lots 2, 11, and 4B, applicant Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center, Inc. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas disturbed outside the approved limit of work for the project as shown on the drawings entitled 131, 133, 151 Scotland Road Disturbance Plan of Land, Sheet 1 of 1 dated April 9, 2018, and 131, 133, 151 Scotland Road Buffer Zone Mitigation Plan, Sheets 1 and 2, 2 dated April 30, 2018, and described in supporting documents prepared by Meridian Associates and LEC Environmental Consultants, Inc. The applicant also requests release of a stock work order in order to implement the remediation plan and stabilize the overall site. Requires a supermajority, four out of five votes, the selectmen for the special permit granted November 15, 2017. As Jeff is recovering from surgery, he will be using the, what is the?
Okay, the planning board would like to open the public hearing for a re-noticed meeting from March 11th and 18th, 2009, because of recent turnover in the planning board members, its work advice, the town council. Larry, do you want to read the notice?
Yes, this is the public hearing notice, planning board public hearing notice, which appeared in the Newbury Court Daily News on March 11th and March 18th, 2019. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Tuesday, March 26, 2019, at 7:15 p.m. in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Office's 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass., 01922, Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing to consider an application submitted by Eric Sorensen, President, Newbury Golf Center, Inc., for modification of a previously approved site plan. The applicant requests approval of a proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work at 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road, assessors map R43 lots 2, 11, and 4B, as shown on the drawings entitled 131, 133, 151 Scotland Road Disturbance Plan of Land, Sheet 1 of 1 dated April 9, 2018, and 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road Buffer Zone Mitigation Plan, Sheets 1 and 2 of 2 dated April 30, 2018, and described in supporting documents prepared by Meridian Associates and LEC Environmental Consultants, Inc. The applicant also requests release of a stock work order in order to implement the remediation plan and stabilize the overall site. The application is on file for review during regular business hours with the town clerk and in the planning office, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. For more information, contact the planning office at (978) 465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed restoration proposal should appear at the time and place designated above. My rate is just here, Newbury.
So that's your open round? So I believe what we're going to do tonight is review where we are at present. We're going to go through the conditions that we set last year, both the, both boards agreed to. We'll have a presentation by Eric and company, have some discussion, open this up for public comment, and then make some steps about how to move forward with this project. So I think in, the first thing we have to do is, we've been submitted a erosion control plan, so I think we need to formally accept having received this, so that we can send it to our engineer to have it reviewed. So I might get a motion from my board?
So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor? So what I'd like to do is go through the conditions that we have previously set, and I've discussed these with both our conservation agent and our building inspector as far as how they view them and what they consider to be done or not. So, condition one, subject to the below conditions, the April 30, 2018 mitigation plan is provisionally and conditionally approved only insofar as the applicant may undertake site grading, soil stabilization, and planting, and may pull and grind stumps outside of the wetland resource and buffer zones in strict compliance with the April 30, 2018 mitigation plan. The site grading, soil stabilization, and planting have not been completed to date. Subject to the below conditions, June 7, 2017 grading plan on most recent provision, July 25, 2018, is provisionally and conditionally approved for the purposes general, purpose allowed hearing. The grades are still not completed as laid out. No other work site per, condition three, no other site work, site preparation alterations or other activities except those specifically identified above. So other work should not be going on. The provisionally approved work shall strictly conform to the submitted plans of record. That is condition four. No objection there. Condition five, the applicant shall submit a full and complete landscape plan addressing the entire site except the areas proximate to the Carboneys, 121 and 123 Scotland Road, Laura Hanlon and Francis Henni, 167 Scotland Road, and Jean Cunningham, 143 Scotland Road. The abutters mitigation plan no later than August 23, 2018, by the close of business 4:00 p.m., i.e. three business days before the next session of the continued public hearing scheduled for August 29, 2018. Through discussion, it was allowed that that couldn't be completed on time. The applicant shall no later than August 23, 2018, submit a full and complete operation and maintenance plan detailing with specificity how the applicant will maintain the landscaping, planting, and features proposed in the landscaping plan to achieve approximate stabilization and survivability for no less than two years. There was a plan submitted, not, not up to the standards we would have liked. Seven, the applicant shall simultaneously submit a full and complete site plan in accordance with all requirements of the zoning bylaw. Prior to submission of the site plan, the applicant shall obtain review, comment, and approve of the reconfigured driveway path by the fire department. This condition was completed. Seven, eight, the applicant shall no later than August 23, 2018, submit a full and complete schedule of work detailing with specificity the time and sequence of all landscaping, planting, related features such as drainage, irrigation, and grading as required. Through discussion, it was allowed that this couldn't be done due to weather conditions and other issues. Nine, the scheduled work shall commit to completion of all landscaping, grading as required above by no later than October 1, 2018. This was not done. A sidewalk shall, ten, a sidewalk shall be held on Saturday, August 25, 2018, at 9:00 a.m., at which time a minimum all grade shall be staked and bloom shall be floated at the proposed building locations, lightbulb locations, to indicate exact locations and height of those structures and fixtures. This was done, although the blooms were insufficient to the task and did not give us a very clear idea of what was going on. Eleven, following the sidewalk, the applicant shall submit a full and complete landscape plan addressing the remaining areas of the site, the abutters mitigation plan no later than September 6, 2018, i.e. three business days before the September 11, 2018, the date codes refer to their session and the continued public hearing. As the work that would go into making this mitigation plan hadn't been completed, this could not be done. Twelve, the application, applicant shall, upon approval of the landscaping plan, provide a cash bond or substantial equipment security in an amount deemed sufficient by the board to cover the cost of replacing failed plantings so that no less than 90% of those plantings survive at least two years. Again, as the work was not completed, step 12 was also not completed at no fault of the applicant. Thirteen, the applicant shall arrange for fund and schedule no less than three onsite meetings, inspections per week with the town's consulting engineer from today forward and while the provisionally approved work is undertaken. Our engineer reports that he has not been there three times a week. Fourteen, the applicant shall engage a licensed professional as site project manager who shall at minimum be charged with overseeing and monitoring all of the above activities and shall communicate and meet with the town's consulting engineer. This only happened marginally and has not happened all winter. Fifteen, the board may elect not to proceed with any other aspect of the pending application until the above has been completed to the board's satisfaction. Sixteen, the applicant shall provide suitable and appropriate dust controls, control measures, and erosion and sediment controls as conditions dictate at all times until the site is landscaped and stabilized. Such measures shall be consistent with accepted industry practices, local and state regulations, and with the recommendations made in the SWIP reports. While attempts have been made, this has not been suitably accomplished. Seventeen, the board encourages the applicant to communicate regularly and substantively with the agents of the town to ensure the above submissions are as likely as possible to be accepted to the board when filed. Again, this is not meeting the minimum for the SWIP reports, and so it is felt by the town that substantive communication has not happened. Eighteen, should any of the above conditions not be met and/or not be timely met, the board may revoke these provisional approvals, and if it does, the applicant may cease from continuing any provisional approved activities at the site and shall forthwith stabilize the site as is, and install or deploy appropriate stormwater and erosion control measures suitable for the fall, winter, and spring seasons. Furthermore, should any of the above conditions not be met and/or met in a timely manner, the board encourages the appropriate agents of the town to undertake enforcement as may be appropriate and necessary to ensure that the site is stabilized and the town and public interest is protected from any and all harms that are or may be caused by the site in the condition that it is at that time. As part of the public hearing, we then, pardon me, that was a lot to read through, moved on to condition 19, to allow site preparation and related preparation, including footings for the parking lot and building, and to allow the building inspector to review and approve permits therefore, but not to allow delivery or construction of the building. To the best of our knowledge, the building permit has not been granted, and the footings have not been set in place. Twenty, construction of the building may proceed provided that no operations or use shall commence unless and until the board is, until the board in consultation with the zoning enforcement officer certifies and finds that each and every one of the conditions of the approval have been met to the board's satisfaction. Again, this has not been completed. The, and then the last one, and with the date deadlines permission set forth in the board's 6/26/18 vote are stayed with the exception of conditions 19 and 20, voted 8/20/9/18 or 9/11/18, and that the applicant shall hereafter adhere to and comply with the terms and conditions of 9/19/18, updated 10/3/18, lettered to the Murrin Cameron Group until further review and consideration of the board, and the applicant shall provide copies of all reports prepared and submitted in accordance with the federal EPA and state DEP regulations. As we have many new members on your board, do you want to do any updating or talk about this before we give Eric a chance to present?
I think the board has been presented with enough information. They've been reading incessantly, but we can probably let Eric continue.
Eric, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Okay. I just want to introduce Scott Cameron from Cameron Morton, Michael Rosen, my lawyer, and site contractor John Miller from Miller Golf. Just to kind of update everybody where we're at with everything, obviously we didn't do anything this winter except erosion control. We did submit the SWIP reports every week to the town, and Scott was out there with his team managing the erosion every week. Going forward with the project, we're ready to proceed. John's ready to get out there and start going next week, bring his equipment in this week, and get the project going again. The thing that, what you saw earlier, you voted on, that was something that we wanted to get into February, and we presented that in February. That plan is now obsolete, it's changed, the conditions have changed, so that's, and I think Scott can talk a little bit about that, but that's something that, we're not going to go in that direction because the weather's changed. The weather's going to dictate the project on how John goes about. The weather's going to dictate the project on how John goes about on the site. He can talk about that a little bit today, but that's, you know, weather's going to be a big role in how we move the machines around, what area he works on and so, you know, that's kind of, every day is going to be different with the spring as we know. So, that's kind of where we are. Obviously, I can have them come up and talk. We can open up questions, whatever.
Well-
Sir, can I, Eric?
So, the last condition twenty-one that you read, I don't know whether you said we were in compliance or not in compliance, although I'm not sure there is compliance. But I believe condition twenty-one was to stay in until we come back and seek further relief. And that's because, as you pointed out, there were certain things that just couldn't be done last fall.
Yep.
So, I, you know, I think in fairness, as to points one through twenty, twenty-one was adopted to address the fact that we didn't get everything done by the fall and that in the fall, we agreed to come back and meet with the board in February and to get going again as early in the season as we could so that we could take advantage of weather conditions to the extent we had a mild winter and be out there trying to get as much of the project done as quickly into the season as we could. Obviously, to no fault of any member of the board, certain board members left and as a result of that, we had to repost the meeting and because of the transition, unfortunately, it took us, I think, six weeks longer than we had originally scheduled the meeting for. I think we had actually previously scheduled the meeting for February.
Yes.
But essentially, we're here, I guess, to just kind of, you know, wrap the whole, you know, one comment around the whole thing, which is condition twenty-one, which is we stayed all the conditions in the fall. We recognized that as we were getting closer to the winter, we chose to stabilize the site after a sidewalk, after meetings with the boards. We laid down winter rye. The effects of laying down the winter rye helped the site, made it through the winter fine. Neil McCarthy, our tree and landscape professional, has been out there monitoring as well to the extent any tree had any issues. He staked them. We lost no trees over the winter. Everything took, everything's there, it's still on the ground. And so, we're here tonight to now ask, as to condition twenty-one, can we live that stead? And can we get the professionals out there as quickly as possible so that we can start getting the work done in accordance with the conditions and in an order that these boards believe is appropriate? So, I, you know, I think, just from your perspective, I think, just making sure we're all on the same page, that condition twenty-one, especially for the new board members, was the stopgap in the fall to bring us to a date in the spring.
Part of the reason I didn't speak about twenty-one is I'm not entirely sure that no work has gone on, if there's been any soil movement or anything up there. And so, Doug, if you would like to speak to what you saw on your sidewalk today, that would be great.
There were, there were two piles of material up there that I was somewhat concerned with because they were dumped, they're right up on top. Light soil, they've got pipe in them. They're actually under the state law, they're going to be hazardous material because you've got unground brick, you've got unground concrete, you've got blacktop and pipe in them. So, it's not a lot of it, it's salt and peppered through, but as it stands, they're not in compliance with the law. Now, it looked like there were two piles up there. One's still there and the other one left a footprint, but it's gone. So, I don't know where it went on site, but it's probably, it looked consistent with the material in the other pile. There was still a chunk of concrete left on the ground. So, that pile needs to be addressed somehow. The other issue I had was our stockpile problem child that we go to every single time we go on the site visit. What happened there was you've put up two or three silt fences. They built the silt up totally behind them and run around them. Now, what they've done is there is a slight rise there. It's about a three-foot rise there before it gets to the driveway. But there's a saddle back about fifty or sixty feet to the northeast corner that the water's going into the saddle. You must have known it because you did something on the corner. You put some hay bales and a little bit of stone there and then you tried to scratch a small channel across the driveway. Well, it didn't take it all. What the water's doing is coming and going right down the driveway and it's left a bunch of silt, a pile of silt down at the bottom of the corner, which is the worst place for it because that's that place where you can't control, where the water and the silt run in underneath that hay that you've got there and in underneath your silt fence and ends up down on Scotland Road. So, those two things need to be addressed. The other thing I noticed, it's not really my purview, but your safety fence, your construction fence around your hole is, well, it's all this high. The snow in the winter's torn it down. So, that needs to put back up. And that's, I wouldn't want to fall in that hole. It's a good thing you had it because it's probably got three feet of loose silt in it. That's a dangerous hole, that ought to be protected.
Okay. Who is the current site manager?
John.
All right. So, one of the conditions is that our engineer and our town officials have your license information because in the past, we've had various people fill that job. We haven't always known how to get ahold of them, haven't had their credentials. And because of the ongoing issues, no, making sure that, you know, I don't know you, but I'm sure you're a great guy, but making sure that you have the credentials and the wherewithal to do the job properly is really important to the town. Please communicate with both Sam and Doug before the end of the meeting and get John's SWAC's information so that you can be in contact with all those people and they can confirm that you are what you say you are, that you know what you're doing, and that we can have some faith that this site is going to be managed well. So, are there further questions from my board at this time?
Well, we haven't heard a, much of a narrative other than you want to go forward. We need some more information. So, are you going to attempt to comply with the conditions that have already been set in front of you or how is this going to go forward?
Yeah. Thank you for the work at Scott Cameron, Morton Cameron Group, 66 South Street, Kansas, Massachusetts. So, I'm going to back again to a little more of a summary from the engineer's perspective. I came on board with this project back in September last year. It was right before the meeting that we were before you guys last fall. It was, it was pretty clear immediately to me that there wasn't enough time left in the season to get done what they were hoping to get done with the equipment that was on site, with the team that was on site. So, we presented at that meeting. The presentation wasn't about trying to get this thing done by the winter. The presentation was trying to get it to a point where we can control this over the winter with no equipment. So, it was get it regraded, get temporary sediment basins in place, stabilize the hotspots that we're having problems with that first day I came out there. And I know Doug's seen all this out there as well. What that site looked like on September 18th, which was kind of my first thorough sidewalk compared to what it looked like at the end of November, was night and day. We had achieved some partial stabilization despite the tough weather in the raining of November. We had a quick winter ride down. The entire site was regraded. We got and managed to get in some sediment basins and get things situated in the area. The goal was to get stabilized so we could try and control the winter. And I know Doug mentioned a trench. There was no equipment on site over the winter. So, I was out there, one of my engineers was out there, Eric was out there with hands and shovels, trenching across and bringing water to an area so that we could control this. Overall, with the resources we had over the winter, I thought we did a darn good job. We did, you know, we worked great for the relatively mild winter. Once we got through November, which was a historically high rainfall month, it was, it was pretty good for most of the winter. We had been gearing up, coming into January to try, we met with Doug and Moakra on site, I believe. We were gearing up for that February 12th meeting to present to you our plan to get going on February 13th. We had, John, we were in discussions with them at the time. We were trying to get things lined up for that date. That plan we had at the beginning was geared towards a February 13th start. We were trying to take advantage of some of the frozen ground conditions that we still would have had for a few more weeks and we did end up having that and relatively light rain. We were kind of looking at the forecast and preparing for that to get some of the heavy expedition work done and stabilized so that we get full growing seasons on certain areas of the site we're concerned about. Obviously, with the quorum, some of the issues, that whole plan, you throw out. It doesn't matter anymore. What does matter on that plan is our approach to this, which is going to be, get things finished as fast as possible, get them stabilized as fast as possible. I'm not talking about just trying to get the whole thing done and then stabilize the whole thing. The plan is, and Doug can speak to it, we're going to be looking at the weather forecast, scheduling work areas of the site, starting with some of the areas down the front and then working our way from the back forward as best we can, again, playing with the weather to get an area finished and graded, stabilize it. Finish and graded, stabilize it. My plan is to achieve stabilization as fast as possible. It has been from day one. I know Eric's been very reactive with the resources he had available in the winter, everything we've recommended and tried to get done. And so, I think from an engineering perspective, it is extremely important that these guys can get going as soon as possible to start achieving stabilization. Not just from the stormwater runoff, but also before we get into the July, August, September months. We need to get that, that area top, we need to get that stabilized. We've got to get the dust and make sure we have that under control. So, we have a lot of work to do in a short timeframe to get there. And I'm concerned about missing that window if we don't get going right away. I'm concerned about pushing work out in, you know, into the dry months. I want to get in, get things going. And we have had good communication oversight. Once things start, you know, moving again on the site, you know, we're going to be out there frequently and communicating and talking about here, you know, you know, what are we doing, staying on top of things. So, it's been dormant for quite a long time. I'm very anxious to get going. I really want to see this thing cleaned up and finished. So, I think from my perspective, that's, that's what I hope to be doing as soon as we get the equipment out there in a few days.
Maybe it doesn't matter at this point, but I hear you describing wanting to stabilize the site from the back coming forward and yet in February, I believe that there was a request to be cutting the road in the front.
That's what I'm saying, it was, it was a different approach. The roadway in the front is because we had some frozen ground conditions. The water table has been very low. So, I had confidence that effectively we were working with summer ground conditions except that everything's frozen. So, we had that opportunity to cut it in. It was a small window and it was aggressive, but the weather forecast was good. It looked like we could do it. That's why that has changed. We've got to play, this cut for the driveway, that is 100% dependent on the weather. We've got to look at long-range projections, make sure we try to hit that window. And there will be additional stabilization that we put in before we even start doing that, just to make sure there's redundancy and fail-safe in place to pick up any, you know, and, you know, cover any potential issues we could run into. I've worked with John for a number of years. I think we did our first project back around 2006. Again, you know, I was very excited when he became one of the team because, you know, what I've known is he does respond, he does communicate well. I think this is a good, this is a good team going forward. Communication's going to be key and also making sure, you know, all of this, you know, whatever meetings or correspondence, sidewalks we might have with Doug, Moakra, building inspector, you know.
Does the board have any question?
I think that's very encouraging that you're wanting to promote communication because I think that's been an issue. Accountability, accountability has been an issue. John, John, you have to understand the bonus of this now is going to come on your shoulders. Both these boards are very concerned with what's gone on. We've had a lot of disappointment, I think that's fair to say, and have lost a lot of confidence in this project. And the fact that there are materials on site, there should be good on site. I'm not sure if there were trees lost, are there wood trees lost? It's very, you know, it's very easy for this site to be evaluated. People can, you know, look at it. So, it's imperative, John, that you're going to be in very close contact with our building inspector because last year, we put that stipulation in place that there was to be weekly conferences and it didn't happen. And I think at this point in time, both these boards don't have any patience for non-accountability. So, you're going to be walking into a difficult situation, but everybody that's here wants this work and wants us to resolve in an appropriate manner.
We've been in this for over thirty years and we don't complain. You know, we're inheriting this situation right now. So, the first order is business is to come in and inspect it and make my plans. So, I have to do it out of phase the way we normally would, but we have to discuss some corrective measures in place and we'll get the ship right.
That's very important, but we would like to see that. I think that's imperative. Thank you, John.
Anyone else?
Sam, was there anything you wanted to add as far as an update?
Just like we spoke, just communication's been broken at best with the last site contractor. It was more me chasing him than him chasing me and, you know, really making sure we're following the plans. I think we've been up there more times than really we want to count. I think as far as like the SWIP reports, those types of things, a lot of what we're getting is, you know, cookie cutter, same thing from the last time. Maybe we get it for a couple of weeks, maybe we don't get it for a month or two. So, these are the type of things that really are draining the confidence that, you know, if we can't get these little things right, even just a weekly phone call of, hey, here's what we did, do you want to come take a look? Or a weekly SWIP that isn't just a cut and paste with the date change, even if that's the case, you know, some sort of comment says to, hey, this is what's been going on. But, you know, other than that, I think it's kind of a, you know, new guy, new face. Like, hey, I want to see it done and not want to visit unless it's Christ.
We'll exchange info, I'm sure.
Yep.
Good.
Are you planning on attending all the public continuation, public meetings with the applicant? I strongly advise you do that because in the past, it's been, we've had questions and that LeBurg hasn't been here to answer them and it doesn't, it doesn't roll out. I don't know if it's too early to start talking about the conditions that Mark Matten was asking. The SWIP reports, have they been received?
Yeah, they're great.
Have they been, have they been received? Have they been received on time and as many of you received? Have they been, you know, absolutely submitted on time and get what you needed over the winter?
Can I talk to that, Sam?
Done.
So, that doesn't roll too good coming into this. You dealt with them in Hockville, no, I do-
If I could speak to that. We were out there every week. There was no activity going on. It was dormant for a long portions. November, I think we were communicating, I was at the CONCON meeting in November. We had so much rain, we got, I had three or four guys out in inspections. We just got back a lot. So, we have been out there every week. You can see the dates on the reports every week. I've got photo catalog of six months of inspections, been out there every single week and I've looked at them times a week. So, I will make sure they get out there and we get these in a weekly basis, but we weren't, it's, it's as if we weren't there. We were out there every single week. See the dates on the inspection, it's pretty consistent, this is great.
So, I think I'm all about crossing the teeth, John, just make sure that that happens. I believe, you want to talk about, I don't have the right time to talk about conditions. So, in the past, I know there's been an issue with a water truck and dust control and it hasn't, hasn't happened. That can't happen this year. So, what are you going to do to make sure that that doesn't happen?
As soon as we get to a dry dust, we have to get a water truck. We have water on site.
That's not what I want to hear.
So, the first thing we're going to do is we're starting as soon as possible because we've got to get the lion's share of this work done before we get to that season. That's, that's our biggest defense against that. If there are any areas that aren't finished up by then, yeah, we might have to hit it with a water truck. We might have to hit it with calcium chloride or flaculins. Make sure we keep any runoff coming out, like- Right now, it's time. It's getting out there. We kind of lost a month, through no fault of anybody in this room, but things happen. So from my perspective, we're kind of a month behind schedule, and it's really imperative. And John's got a good crew, he's got flexibility to bring in manpower if we need it. So that's why I have great confidence that we're going to get this going. But it's imperative that we get going.
So how big is your staff that you're going to have?
It'll rotate on this, because we're not sure. It's a high silk content material, so anything that gets wet is going to be destabilized. We do our compaction rollers, and then we do on the fill side, we want to compact. If the material's not stable enough, we're just going to be cricking over each other. But right now, we're going to try to work on the lower basins, get the water so we can steer the water into the lowest points where they should go. And then we'll be working on the back of the range, working our way out. And as we get into, however the breaks look, like hundred yard breaks, we'll be seeding and completing, and then we'll start the next phase, seeding and complete, just keep completing our way until we get the whole range done. We're trying to get the range done and seeded, so we can have six weeks of rolling time before we get into July and August.
If the weather is accommodatable, how many weeks do you think?
We're shooting for 16 for the whole site.
That's to close the house?
Not the building construction, that's being site stabilized, seeding down, so it's just really at the building pad sites.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that.
Building would be, it's a Morton building, two weeks to put it up.
Yeah, it's really, they can actually foundation.
But then the inside's going to take longer.
The site itself, if it's all stabilized and put up there.
So as I understand, you're proposing a schedule, a 16-week schedule, starting at the back of the property, moving the apartment.
Right. Building interactions, we'll be doing some hammering on some of the high spots, a ledge on the sightlines of the range, in and out. Because the weather's inclement, we'll be trying to work on the ledge and do other things. But that lower basin, the last time I was up there, it's still pretty wet in there, so we're going to have to try to do some de-wiring and see if we can remove that silt and get to some kind of stable bottom. I'm not sure what we're going to find in there, so we might have to do some material exchanging to get some aggregate in there to settle that thing down.
So right now, we have 15 plus whatever acres of basically exposed land. So our goal is to knock that down as fast as possible. What I want to communicate and let everybody in the room know, we go to erosion control school, it's a generic school, but when you take classes and you go through all the programs, one of the first things they teach you is flexibility. You can't be rigid. You can't, in my opinion, you can't put in a plan, how you're going to do your, you can put perimeter controls in, you can know where you're going to put stock piles and have a rough idea. But you've got to be able to flex on the fly and adjust what you're doing, because you don't know what the weather's going to bring, you don't know what other unknowns are going to bring, and you've got to be prepared to jump on it. So I don't want to set any false expectations that we're going to be working in this area now and that area then. If we run into certain situations, we might move somewhere else if we keep the stabilization process moving forward. I think for sure, we're going to be starting with getting some of the collection points done, at least getting water rerouted areas that that certainly will happen early on. But we're going to be moving and adjusting with what comes at us with the weather. So right now, we get a, we get a, we get to it, still looks pretty decent, so I hope we can get in and get a good start and make some of these bigger, more important areas done right again.
I think that's understandable.
I'm going to ask a little question, Eric. It's truthful. Your team has changed a lot. How do I know that these guys are going to be here in a month?
Good question. They're going to finish the job.
Oh, no, we're talking 16 weeks. That's what you just said. So that's from us. What assurance do we have? I want you to be here, and I want him to be here. You've had a great team before, but they've changed, the players have changed. And so what assurance of consistency are we going to have?
I think, I have a good team now, I had a good team before. I think as the project's getting towards the end, or we see the light at the end of the tunnel, I think these guys can close it. I'm assure you, there's no guarantee, obviously, act of God or whatever happens, but this is the team that's here to finish it. Well, that's something.
He's paid every bill within a week of sending out an invoice for six months. It's key, he's entrusted and engaged.
Right. I have no playability where.
I think there's sincere one.
I asked a question, if the weather is accommodatable, because high and all.
Well, it's one thing to be flexible, but I think we have been flexible, we've been disappointed. And so we want to know that you have what you need under contract, however it has to be, to get the job done, and that you're not going to come back in three weeks and say, oh, well, I had this guy, but I lost him because of X, Y, Z. Or other subs that you couldn't, everybody has to be lining up in order for you to meet this schedule. Do you have that?
We don't subcontract. I do everything else, so it's all under my own hat, my own equipment, I own everything. Been doing this for 30 years. This is a tiny project in scope of what we've done.
What's the name of your company?
Miller Vault Construction.
So Eric, it's not to be looking post-cure.
No, that's a good question. I mean, one of the things I do want to bring up too, I need to get the building permit in hand in order for Morton to get on the schedule. So that's, we've got the septic, we've got everything aligned, so that's something. I need to get in so I can line up the building.
So I think the building permit will be attainable when the conditions are met, because that's what Sam, John, the conditions are met, things happen, and we can't make the conditions met.
And I think up until the stay, you had the permit to go forward with the building up until the stay, and then, you know, too late, you couldn't do it.
Right.
Right, and so you had to stop.
Right.
But prior to that, so it's like, we're not necessarily looking to hold you up again. We're looking to figure out where the starting point is here now after the stay. Does anyone else have any questions?
And the building itself, and that crew's separate from him. Morton comes in with their own crew, builds a building, so it's totally separate. There's a separate crew on it.
So I guess, I guess, you want to go? Well, I guess, I know you've, Mr. Rosen, you said you're looking to wrap everything that, the last motion that we had, or condition, number 21. But what exactly would you like from us to?
So I think what I would like is you would lift 21, which would effectively reinstate the 20 original conditions. And then I think when you look at those conditions, I think the only thing that you would then need to do is go in and update the dates on some of them. But I think the goal is to lift the stay, but not waive any of your prior conditions. There are still the conditions. We recognize there are some we're behind on, but that's going to be these guys' job to get our product and keep it moving forward.
Condition 21, and I'll read it again. I move that the dates, deadlines, and permission set forth in the board's 6/26/18 vote are stayed with the exception of condition 19, voted 8/29/18, and 20, voted 9/11/18, and that the applicant shall hereafter, here to comply with the terms and conditions of the 9/19/18, updated 10/3/18 letter from Marin Cameron Group, to further review consideration of the board, and the applicant shall provide copies of all reports prepared and submitted in accordance with the federal EPA and state DPD regulations. Before we move on to discussing the next steps and how we want to proceed with that, I'd like to open up for public comment, unless someone has a burning question from either of the boards.
I have one question, Damon. Number 12 that you read, that there has to be, let's see, broadcast bond or substantial equivalent security, has that been received?
No, in discussion with the town, we determined that until the work was complete and we knew the expense of the plantings of the trees and the screens plantings and fences and things like that, that we would hold off on establishing that bond. So it was agreed, I believe, between council and Martha, that we could wait on that condition. And with that, if there's any public comment, please come forward, state your name and address, and what you'd like to say. I love this. So now, moving on to next steps.
Damon, 16 weeks, we'll put that at 7/16. So giving a little bit of leeway because of the weather in July.
I mean, end of July would be great, beginning of July would be better. There is, as far as next step, an issue that we have as the selectmen, which is that we are three of four members who have to vote right now. And so we cannot actually lift that condition. So my proposal is that we set up a sitewalk, which again, Jeff won't be able to attend, but that's not required, and schedule another public hearing in the near future in the hopes of being able to get these guys back to work.
Can we just discuss Mullen, and is it possible that he can, that you could, can they take a vote outside of Mullen, and can he then watch and vote?
Not outside of a public hearing. He's not in attendance tonight, so there's no opportunity for him until, unless and until we get to the next scheduled public hearing.
He could watch this hearing, we could schedule a public hearing, and he could remotely attend that hearing.
He could remotely attend that one, or he might be.
On a subsequent night.
Yeah.
Right, so if you were not.
Correct.
If you were not able to attend, just because we're losing time, you technically could continue this just the selectman now, because you don't need to do a joint meeting. The planning board could lift tonight, the selectman could continue, you could have a subsequent meeting literally in 72 hours, if he could watch the hearing and then participate telephonically. Again, the goal being, if the three members of the board who can vote tonight and the planning board are in favor of moving this forward and getting the work started, is there an expedited way we could mullen the fourth member in so that we don't lose another two weeks and put us into August?
Well, respectfully, counsel, before we even address that hypothetical, I think the chairman hadn't really finished his thought on how to proceed with the scheduling and a site visit and things that could happen in the interim. It may be possible that when you do finish your thought and that's discussed among the board, that that works itself out without the need for more complex machinations. If it doesn't work out, we can discuss perhaps those possibilities on how to effectuate that. But I don't think we quite got there yet. Trust me, we're wrong, obviously.
No, I mean, I feel that given the incomplete nature of some of the conditions 1 through 18, that, it's at least my feeling, that a sitewalk is appropriate before lifting condition 21. I don't know how my board feels about that, or how the planning board feels about that. So that's what I would like to discuss at this point, as far as the steps moving forward, and when to schedule our next public hearing, so.
Well, I'd like to get up there and take a look and see what the winter's done, because I'm not comfortable voting on any of these conditions without actually getting a look at it through my own eyes.
Couldn't we do both? Well, you may not be able to, because of, you know, if the members present or not, but couldn't we schedule a sitewalk, all of us, sooner rather than later? The planning board could decide to lift until the next continuation date, which would also try to expedite quite quickly, which would allow you to go forward, but still have us very much involved to be watching the initial progress. I'm just tossing it out there. I don't know if anyone has thoughts one way or the other, but it seems to me to go through another continuation, a sitewalk, and then a continuation, which could be two to four weeks away, is not acceptable.
I mean, I was, my proposed schedule would be to meet, to do a sitewalk on Saturday, and then potentially meet next Monday or Tuesday as a continuation.
And you have a meeting on Tuesday anyway. I know you're reviewing a warrant.
That's right. Yeah. So we will be together at that point.
But that will take a while.
I know. And that's a joint meeting with FinCom, which is why I thought Monday night might be.
But everything's fine. It should just be a bring it up, vote it. It should, then go into the warrant.
Yeah, we could meet earlier, and we'd probably have to have Jeff calling in since.
Yep. Okay. I'm game for that.
Can I just, how quickly do you post? Because to mullen in, he is going to have to watch. So if you haven't posted it by Monday.
He's probably already watching it.
If you're watching, can you call someone and tell us?
Turn on my ringer right now?
If it does take you five business days to post or whatever, you would not have him under the mullen rule, so I would just ask that question.
I'm sure that as it is recorded, we can get it to him, even if it isn't uploaded to the YouTube channel, but, so. I think, as everyone has stated, we would like you guys to get working, we would like to see this completed, and we will do our due diligence to make that possible. So I would like, from my board, a motion to have a sitewalk, maybe 9:00 AM Saturday morning, work for everyone, and a continuation to 6:30 on Tuesday, the 2nd.
Of April.
Of April.
Are you available Tuesday?
And you would do that before the joint meeting with FinCom?
Yes.
I'll move the motion.
One second.
Is there any further discussion on this?
So what, I'm just, move the meeting?
Vote. When is the meeting?
When is the meeting?
6:30 April 2nd. Thank you.
And the sitewalk's 9:30?
9:00.
9:00.
Saturday morning.
You know what, can I, can you guys vote, Peter? Just cross and draw.
On Saturday night?
Okay, you can, can you be there? Because I know you're going to have questions.
The sitewalk would, the meeting is up to you guys to determine if you want to do that meeting time as well, so.
I would like to have the sitewalk before that.
I would like to, so I think it can, Larry and Martha, can you make the Saturday night?
I'm not available Saturday, so.
I'm not sure yet, but I am.
I'm just looking at the weather, and I think it's not raining between now and then, so that would be not efficient.
Well, why don't we schedule it for, who can make it? Can you make it?
I can make it.
You can.
Because there's a second time, maybe, or the numbers, you can't make it on Saturday. I don't know, is it the time or the day?
I'm away from Friday through Wednesday.
Weather map, this is cloudy Saturday morning, rain will be Sunday.
I don't know if he performed on Tuesday. So I was trying to, that's in time.
We're not on Tuesday yet, so.
Yeah, okay.
So can I have a motion for a sitewalk? Can you do the motion for a sitewalk?
So move.
All in favor?
So if I could interrupt you for just a moment, I'd like to vote on the, what, the move here?
All on the table.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
The sitewalk and the 6:30 meeting.
All right, so you're doing the 6:30 meeting on?
Tuesday, April 2nd.
So what are we going to do?
So we have to decide if we want to.
How soon can we? How soon, how soon can we have that?
Wednesday night, that's right. I hope so, I'm traveling. My plane's on time, I should be back in Boston.
The two thirty.
Yeah.
I missed my last meeting, my plane's delayed.
So that, so are we looking at April third? What else is on April third?
Well, right now we've got two public hearings.
Well, how do we feel about, we have now, we go out on site on Saturday. And if we do lift the stay, then we meet on Wednesday. If we don't like what we saw...
You mean, well, that's right, I caught that.
We're going to go site walk Saturday. We're going to continue our planning board hearing to Wednesday. If we don't like what we saw on Saturday, can we then... Pardon?
Reinstate it.
Right, we would reinstate the stay on, on, on Wednesday when we need it.
Couldn't vote it tonight, conditional.
Or we could, right, or we could do that. Right, exactly.
Yep.
Well, if we don't... Well, that's true, I can, right, okay. There's no need to. All right, so we can decide on, on Wednesday whether to go or not. I tried. Too many, too many moving parts.
The rest, yeah.
All right, so we do the site walk, we'll have a planning board meeting. If somebody moves that, we should have a plan on Wednesday.
You already have one. You have to move the continuation of the public hearing.
Before we, before we leave that last question, also, do you have any concerns with how this is laying out right now?
I take my cue from the board. I don't see any legal concerns. I mean, that would be my purview if I thought it was something based on legal defect or some sort of legal significance that I would inform the board of, I would. I think at this point, really, the cost benefit analysis that the board's doing as to how to proceed versus what your concerns are is a delicate balance. And the board is looking through that policy analysis and deciding how best to proceed, so. I don't think I can offer any advice in terms of policy matters to either board. The familiar faces that I see here have been doing this a while. You're familiar with it. And I'm sure the new faces have read a lot and heard a lot so far to digest. So I think one step at a time is often a good course of action.
So if it's a planning member that can't meet, can't make because he's going to be traveling, if you really wanted to do the site walk, I'm sure the advocate would be amicable if you wanted to go with Doug or Sam or Martin, you could take him to see you.
I couldn't do it before.
Oh, that's right.
I'm meeting next Wednesday.
Okay.
Now, we'll even try to come back Wednesday. And I fear Mrs. Murphy more than you. Oh, we're going.
We can take some photos.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm, I'm sure I'll get some good insight Wednesday.
Could I say?
I think it's...
So can, can we, can we ask one question?
Sure.
In order to at least be doing something during the next eight days, could we conditionally bring equipment in as long as we don't do any work? So that at least maybe we're picking up two of the days back?
Chuck, I heard you groaning.
Well, if, if the, if it were stayed, if the stay were lifted, what would you expect to accomplish between now and next Wednesday?
Erosion control.
Okay, well, can you give them more specific than that?
I mean, traditionally at this time of year, I'll let Scott jump in if he feels the need. The one thing we're worried about is what's going to happen when the rain comes. So the very first thing you look for, the reason they're looking at the basin and the front is what types of erosion controls and other measures can you put in place? And so that you can make sure the basins and the front are stabilized. I mean, quite honestly, well, I was going to say even if you could lift, but you couldn't even lift for that because you don't have a quote. So, but I, I don't believe bringing trucks in is doing work. I, I, you know, I would defer to your counsel, but I think if you gave us permission to bring trucks in, I don't believe that would be a condition that would require a fourth this approval.
I have a question for you, Doug.
Yes.
You had made, when your, when your comments, there's some work that needs to be done, in your opinion, at the site now.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, and following all the equipment left the job, I was somewhat concerned because as you heard me say, that little scratching they tried to do across the driveway by hand, it was ineffective. It's frozen there, they really couldn't do a good job. If they had a piece of equipment on site, they would have cut a small channel across there and it would be working now. So it's not a bad idea, from my point of view, to have them mobilize and have equipment on site. They can't work it, they can't do anything with it without your permission. So to have it, there's a good idea.
And my understanding of where the condition stands is that they are allowed to do erosion control measures currently as deemed appropriate by Conservation Commission. Is that not accurate?
That's one of the conditions. It doesn't prohibit, obviously, the medical century, the beginning of the project, prohibits site activities, so site alterations, except for those limited reasons and purposes. So, and that was spelled out in the last few conditions.
And what are we going to do about this pile that Doug found?
Well, that is one of the things that we need to talk about as moving forward things. So I think as part of the site walk on Saturday, I would expect to have answers about these piles, where they came from, where they went to, and what they're composed of answered. Because if it's not answered by Saturday, it's going to be really hard for me on Tuesday to approve moving forward. So that's my feeling about that.
So why can't we find out about that tonight? Why, do you know what's in those piles now?
Is it up top Doug or is it down?
It's right up on top. They are probably the two, they're probably the two piles furthest west up on top.
Part of Jim's house, is this understanding?
Honestly, I didn't know where it came from. I just saw the contamination in it. I know it hasn't been through something to be prepared because everything in it would be under six inches and they're full brick, they're full pieces of concrete. It can't be in there. I mean, I don't find the soil to be particularly contaminated. It just has this material in it. I mean, there's some provisions under the A B C guidance from D E P for your asphalt, brick, and concrete. And it's just not met in these piles.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take care of it, we'll get it out of there.
I mean, I wouldn't have the discussion at the site visit. And you want that on the public record. And you want to be able to discuss it with your board members. And of course, you can't have the discussion in substance at a site visit, so. Certainly, the advocate's on notice and he prepared to address it for the continued public hearing.
So I think it's a piece of equipment there. Should he remove like Doug found or is that considered a site walk?
So getting into a little bit of the chicken and the egg. It's not supposed to be there. Can you now remove what wasn't supposed to be there? So we haven't gotten to those substantive discussions about the merits of the site activity. So I think what I heard is can we at least mobilize equipment, get it on site so that we're not losing the time it takes to build up and get ready? So we'll be built up. This is speaking for you. You would apologize for putting words in your mouth.
Thank you.
If that's what I'm doing, but so that if and when the board does lift the stay, they're ready to go right there inside. And they don't have the two-day lag time where they make phone calls and the planning. So I think that's all that they're talking about. And that, that's not a per se violation of any of the conditions. That wasn't addressed. Having equipment on the site wasn't the issue. It was about site activity, altering existing conditions. That's, that's my memory.
Okay. I think I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think as we, it is not prohibited in the conditions we've already laid out. I don't think we need to take a vote on that.
I would agree with that, Mr. Chick. I mean, it's a sense of the board's consensus, if you will, that it's not expressly prohibited by your commission.
But, you know, granted, should the site work start?
We will be... I'm going to check on you on Tuesday. And so, I think, I think as the equipment is brought on, there'll be communication with Doug, you know.
And that would be extremely helpful. When you bring the equipment on, would you let Doug or Sam know? Even if you leave him a voice message, who on Saturday? You dropped it off, it's here. I mean, I, I really can't tell you how, you cannot really communicate when it comes to this project. You really can't. And if you think you could call and you, and you're not sure, it's okay, it's all the way.
So...
It's Tuesday.
So I'm going to make, I'm going to actually propose a motion that we, we continue this component of our meeting on Wednesday. And I would just like to give John kind of a heads up. If you could try to facilitate a calendar, a schedule with a calendar of events that we would hope to accomplish in the next sixteen weeks for our board for that meeting, that would be very beneficial to give some guidance as to what we anticipate to do. Understanding that it might be difficult based on weather, but at least there'd be some parameters as to what you anticipate to do in the next sixteen weeks would give much more confidence to our board. Is that fair? Then I'd like to have a motion that we continue this public hearing on Wednesday and our new public hearing at seven...
Seven seventy.
Seven thirty. Yeah.
Second.
Is that April fifth? Third.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We continue already. We did the site walk and continuation at the same time. All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess for the planning board. So we're going to be going into continuation of the Green ER Public Water Overlay District Hearing. So if you'll read that, please, Alicia.
The board is selecting to consider a water supply protection overlay district special permit application submitted by Green ER, care of Dr. Keith Abloh, for proposed rehabilitation of Newbury's Upper Green bounded by High Road, Green Street, and Hanover Street. Assesses map U dash zero nine, lot seventy-five, as shown in the drawings entitled Newbury Upper Green, High Road, Green Street, and Hanover Street, Newbury, Mass. oh one nine five one, map U dash oh nine, parcel seventy-five, dated June nineteenth, twenty nineteen, prepared by Camet Engineering for Green ER, care of Dr. Keith Abloh, and as described in the W S P O D special permit application and supporting documents. This requires a super majority, four-fifth vote of the board's selection.
On March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, the board has received an email from Tiffany Bartholmew, executive director of Project Green ER, with Green ER's formal request to be allowed to withdraw their water supply protection overlay district special permit application without prejudice. We understand you wish to speak prior to the board's vote on the request to withdraw. Please come up and speak.
Yeah, so, yeah, we've already submitted, yeah, our withdrawal without prejudice. But we want to come here and ask if there was any, you know, guidance you guys had for any future steps regarding the project? And if you had a list or, you know, just some ideas of what you'd like to see, you know, being improved on the green for us then to go back and start kind of remaking our planning project.
So you're not abandoning that?
No.
Wonderful.
Yeah, what we were suggesting, Cole, what's Cole suggesting is that perhaps you could fashion a list of items that you want to see happen to the green against which green we'd then fundraise. You can choose from the ones we suggested or you might come up with your own.
One of the things that I've been contemplating since as this has moved forward is what the best way to get public input for this project would be and how to get the public to essentially drive the process so that everyone is much more comfortable with it. So I don't know that we are at present prepared to give you a list and say, this is priority one and this is priority two. But I think you've raised some significant concerns for the town. I've always admired your dedication to this project and I would like to see the green improved. So I can't speak for the board, but I know myself, I've been thinking about ways to prioritize, reach out, communicate, and what the best way to get consensus from the community so that it's not a divisive issue but something that we can all celebrate together. So that is on my mind, but I don't have an answer today. I don't know if the other board members would like to speak to it.
Be nice to have a public input without having a public hearing. How do we do that?
We have a coffee hour.
Yeah, we can have that.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea. We'll get everybody to say the fire station. Yeah, we can, you know, on the tape. We've done that before.
On the green, I think it should be on the green.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that after going to all these many meetings and meeting with different committees from the state as well as, you know, here in town and the townspeople. As a designer, I just want to state, we've, we've talked about this from day one. We're very open. We went on the historical nature and preservation of the green and that's where we were sort of directed by the town council and selectmen. But we are open, as we've heard people. If they want to keep the existing trees that are in good and healthy condition and the one to move to a more position of many different types of trees that go around the periphery, which isn't originally the old fashioned look of New England. That doesn't mean we can't change it and have a multiple of different varieties. Perhaps we put tags on them that have the Latin and common names so it becomes an educational source. We go with the large trees right away where the trees haven't been replanted. We create, like we said, to fix the grading, maybe fix the ball field that could stay or go either way, depending on what the town wants to do. We're very flexible. We just want to do what's best for the town to increase the aesthetics and the beauty and the functionality of the upper green, whether it be one year, two years, but fifty years, a hundred years, two hundred years down the road. And we want the right tree, the right plant, in the right place. We can do all natives. We have absolutely no problem with any of that that's come up. I just want to clarify, we're willing to work with the town to go with the best functional and aesthetic purpose of the upper green, keeping within the historical context. We went within historical context. It's historical preservation and restoration. That means restoration and warden of historical preservation, so be it. Work with the town, what do you want? How do we do it? And we think our team together.
That's, that's a, a great, for instance, you might say to begin, let's replace the flagpole. And we would then replace the flagpole. So the idea that, it might be that even that requires a town meeting or a coffee clutch to find out whether it's okay with everyone in the town to replace the flagpole. If so, so be it. But what we are asking is whether you might do even a reductionist list of items that the green needs since it is in such terrible disrepair. And we would then fundraise and give you the money, if you'd like it.
So if the tick for metal finds, all it's done on a purposeful moment of economics, because we don't want to do anything twice. We've brought that up before. Do it once, do it right. because we don't want to do anything twice. We've brought that up before. Do it once, do it right, everlasting. But with that as well, from a design standpoint, I look at it, how's it all work as a composition? And what is the feeling that we're trying to create? It's different from going back to the historical nature of trying to recreate like it was with, with the majestic Alps. If we want to go with different trees, that's wonderful. It's a different look, a different feel. There's nothing right or wrong with either one, as long as it works out. What's best for the town? What would the town like to see? And we're here to help you do that.
But we have to get everybody together on it. Is there even no, just to be clear, is there no item that, that, that the Board of Selectmen would say that you folks are, are able to say, well, this, we would certainly like to get done, and we'd like some money for it? There's nothing, you're saying there's nothing, but the lawn being most thirty percent gravel, nothing? Okay, although we, the Board of Selectmen, are in charge of all town property. Yes. We are put here by the majority to do as the majority wish, and we need the majority input before we make any decision on that. The grass is better than the gravel, than the grass. I guess.
So how about a different approach, too, in the meantime, while we see if you guys as a board want to make a priority list for us? If you have that interest as a future agenda item, but in the meantime, if we came to you with a donation of, say, a flagpole or the restoration of a flagpole, you'll entertain voting and accepting that donation, right? Or a donation of?
We certainly can entertain any motion, any gift to the town, we can entertain. And, you know, I think one of the issues that a lot of residents had, or that I heard from residents, was the scale of the project as a whole. And so breaking the pieces might, A, build trust, because we'll see, people will see how, you know, the flagpole looks and how much nicer it is when it's there. And then if we moved on to?
The retaining wall, the pond.
Yes, one thing.
If we take it in smaller steps, come forward that way. I think that what we were looking for, what Cole is asking, was if maybe you guys would discuss which ones would rank higher? I mean, maybe the flagpole isn't most important. It's just a little bit simpler for us to come forward with something.
I think you guys need guidance, and I think that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Bottom line, what do you want?
So I think we need a full board to do that. But I think that we could come to the next meeting with some, each of us do a wish list, so to speak.
I think probably not the next meeting, because that is the FinCon meeting.
That'll drone on, but.
No, not the second, the one after that, like the first, not the first regular meeting, the two.
Regular meeting?
Yeah. April ninth.
What I, I, I think we should talk to other members. But I think we will put it on the agenda to discuss, it's actually one of the things that I've been talking with JR about, is how to move forward with, because you brought issues forward to the attention of the town that need to be resolved. So whether or not we do it on the ninth for the next scheduled meeting, as far as discussing how to move this forward. I don't want to speak for the rest of the board right now, and I don't know what the agenda looks like coming up. But it is definitely something we'd like to do, and I think having a picnic on the green, where we invite people to come and talk sometime during the summer when it's not sopping wet and it hopefully is nice out, which we could have an alternative site, either in the police station or the fire station, should we get dumped on, which happens in the summertime, could be really successful. So I think we'll, we will discuss at either our next normal meeting or the one after that, how to proceed with this, and if we have any distinct ideas about things that we think we can just say, prepare the flagpole or fix the retaining wall. We can talk about it at that time, but we're not prepared presently to move any.
But I think we should put it, I'm gonna move that we put this on the, on the next agenda, the, not the second, but the ninth, on April ninth, just for discussion. Because I, my concern, this has just happened and I've seen it, is that we say these things, and then they don't get done. And I, I, I don't, I don't want to do that. So I, you can vote me down, but I move that we put on April ninth.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. Before you make any motions, some of us would like to have a say on this.
Well, I, we haven't opened up to public comment yet, and whether or not?
And you're making a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to.
But we're not closing the meeting, so you will get a chance, Fred.
I'm, I'm making a motion not to vote on anything because I want a full board, but I'm gonna put it on the agenda for the next meeting so that we can have public comment at that time.
See, it's funny, I thought the point of order you were gonna make is that the chairman sets the agenda, and he's not currently here right now. So.
That's, yeah, that is a point.
But, uh, I, does anyone on the board wish to speak further at this point? Put it on the next meeting.
We can ask, so you're gonna put it on the next meeting.
Yeah. I was thinking about opening up for public comment, because Fred would like to speak. Are there any objections to that from the board?
We do have so.
I think that's what the, we're at the agenda anyway.
There we go. Fred.
For a thorough twenty-six, March Avon. You know, we, some of us have rubbed against these people to some extent, or people think we have, but I would like to thank them, because they have put a lot of effort into this. And we might have had differences of opinion on specifics, but believe me, they are barking up the right tree. You people have dropped the ball on us. Not just you, but your previous selection, the Board of Selectmen for years, has dropped the ball on, on the upper green and the lower green. And I'd like to make sure that we follow up now, which you seem to be interested in doing, and get something done here. I'm, I'm ashamed. It's gotten so bad. Stumps all over the place, trees not replaced. And something's got to be done, and these people were willing to put up some money and time and everything. Yeah, the specific maybe weren't, weren't right on the money, but believe me, I am very thankful.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, man. We all.
It came from a child, someone.
Mr. Tridwell, please come up.
Mike Tridwell, Six Morgan Ave, Newbury. I look at Selectmen's meeting agenda from three eleven fourteen, and it says, the Town Administrator Tracy Blaine has announced that she had received a notification and a check from Sylvia Luntz estate of fifty-four thousand dollars. This was back, what, five years ago, six years ago? What was it spent? What was it spent on? And if not, where's the money? Fifty-four thousand dollars is a substantial sum. We could have put on the flagpole up by then. But Selectmen, I can sit there and money, okay, I just, where did the money go? That's all I'm asking.
I believe the money is still sitting in the town.
But it's been, but it's been five years. How long do you sit on money without doing it? It's like, we, these things need to be done. So I just don't understand why you sit on money. And this is in the only account. Thank you.
Brian, uh, I believe I am currently facing the same issue in this public hearing. No? Okay.
I anticipated your next question, but please continue.
I was concerned that as it's a four-fifth majority to approve, I don't know if we can accept the declination without them, so.
A withdrawal, in this case, if a withdrawal is being requested, so the Ministry will act of the Board to accept a withdrawal, typically without prejudice.
Okay.
So in this case, the statute forty-eight nine requires a supermajority to grant. It doesn't state any other extraordinary vote to accept a withdrawal.
Thank you very much.
Guys, one other thing to say out of mind, if you don't know where the money was spent, can you get back to me with an answer?
I, I've told by Lisa that it's still in the account.
But are you sure it's in the account?
Am I a hundred percent sure?
Yeah. All I'm asking is, I want a hundred percent answer where the money is and why it hasn't been spent.
Well, I'm gonna have to consult with the Town Administrator and get that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I'm asking.
Any further public comment?
Oh, no, no, no. Are we at the citizens' concern yet?
No.
Okay.
We're in a public hearing.
So I would entertain a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice from Green ER. So.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
As far as Cole, as far as getting together on the green and moving the list and stuff, we'll call up with you. I think you should wait for the weather to get a little better.
Definitely.
And I totally appreciate all the enthusiasm, all of you. Thank you so much. I know it's a lot of work.
I just wanted to be, what's best for the town, again, a hundred, two hundred years down the line, what do we want? And let's think about the big picture.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mike.
We are now at citizens' concerns. Mike, why don't you come up and then?
All right. Just got one quick question. You guys are close to signing a drug act together? Are we close to it? Okay, have, just one more question. Is there a ten percent discount for senior citizens in the contract?
Does it discount the seniors?
I was.
It's not in the new contract. It's gonna be handled as a side letter. That's the way Comcast handles it. And as, I haven't seen the final documents to what the exact amount is gonna be, but it's, and it's not for all seniors. It's for qualifying seniors. So it's gonna be, it's, you have to financially qualify for it. And it's the same thing as other, other, the surrounding towns have, Newbury Board has it.
Because the board, what you got pressure on, because one of the things I'm hearing is ten percent would mean a lot to the senior citizens.
Yeah. I can ask.
Pressure on Comcast is like putting pressure on the insurance company. You know how far you'd get without.
They're not gonna be right, and they're not gonna. I'll ask.
Second, okay, thank you. Thank you, you can sit over here.
You're welcome.
Having a noise down the road, I feel. I went to a concert last, I think it was last week, my grandson's concert at the school. And at the end of the performance, the music director apologized for the sound, for the microphones and, and the, I don't know if she was talking about the whole sound system or not, and she was asking, she said, is there any people that would like to donate towards our microphones? And then I got thinking about the Comcast, the enterprise account, and I wondered if that would be a way to help out the school with their sound system and micro, microphones, whatever it is that they need.
Is that, what school you talking about, Ellen, the Newbury Elementary or Triton?
Well, my grandson's in Newbury Elementary. The concept was at the Triton. So I would imagine it would be their system.
And the sound system was lousy. I was there.
So I understand there's quite a bit of money in that.
The town of Newbury has, has a.
Contractual obligation?
No.
Not that person?
No, it has, we, we contracted with a consultant. We have a consultant's report, that's what we're looking at, that addresses those types of issues, issues that Comcast can provide, or that we can provide to increase education, public access, and government. And actually, the last meeting that we had with Comcast, I was told by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen that there's a list of equipment that the town can provide to Triton. And I was, my hope that we would have it on us, I would be able to sign a warrant tonight to expend that money, but I don't think that's gonna happen. So I will ask again that we fully fund Triton to the, the equipment that they need, because I originally started on the Cable Advisory Committee back in twenty, twenty twelve, and one of the things that I really wanted to achieve was to have Comcast, to be able to have an education channel. We had, at the time, we had no public access at all, no Newbury channel. We now have a Newbury channel that has government and public, and we have education. And actually, it's the education and the public is now shared, I believe. So we have two channels. The town of Newbury was contractually obligated to Triton, I mean, to, through Comcast license from ten years ago, that we should have activated the Newbury, the Newbury Education Channel through Triton. There was a hiccup in the road because, as Triton is a three community town, and there was issues with Rowley and Salisbury that never got really worked out. Salisbury's different, not because they're a city and a river away from the actual school, so they couldn't lay cable anyways. They have to get their stuff through IP, which is digitally, so they already have addressed that, that issue.
Can I drop for a second?
Yep.
The long and short of what Alicia was saying is, yes, we're gonna do it. We have plans to fund both the.
I was selling a nice store.
We've been here a while now. We're gonna be purchasing some cameras for Triton and some sound equipment. And so we're looking at upgrading, and we hope that both Rowley and Salisbury will allocate the funds necessary to match what Newbury does and get that program up to snuff.
But I believe Comcast said that even if they don't try, I'm not to be beholden to another town to have my town of Newbury. I want my residents to turn the TV on and watch their kids. That's what they, what they want to do. I've always wanted that. So I'm not a big fan of being beholden to anybody to not be able to do that. And I believe there is a capability that if the town of Newbury does put up the money, like Damon is saying, that we can only, that we can do it, and it'll only be in Newbury's residence, so. And then Rowley can come up with their own solution in their town. They're different than us. They have Verizon and they have Comcast, so.
Okay, so if the money is.
Money's there.
Money's already there.
Money is there. We just have to spend it.
Right. And why is that a problem?
Because it has to go on a warrant?
Okay.
It has to be voted on by the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, it's just been, it's been largely a, well, if you guys won't do it, then we won't do it, issue between the towns as far as funding. And we've decided that we are going to ignore the other two towns and just start funding what we think is appropriate for students.
Okay. Out of the Comcast money that the town receives, is there like a certain amount you spend each year, or?
It's discretionary. There are certain things we can spend it on and certain things we can't.
It's appropriated each, each year at town, at town meeting. I believe they have a fifty thousand dollar budget, revolving budget. That's appropriated at town, at town meeting, but we had Caleb. He's not here anymore. So we need to hire a new, a new Caleb.
Okay, because isn't there like seven hundred thousand dollars in that total?
I'm not quite sure what the, what the balance is.
Can I just ask a little more? I've been working at Triton for five years, and I had a student for the last three years in VGV. And Bob Lathrop, every year he's asked the town of Newbury for money, and never has been given a cent. So this is like, you know, once again, why are we sitting on money? That's why, that's why I know. It's like you don't, it's like, there's seven hundred thousand dollars in the account, okay? You could give fifty thousand dollars to Triton and get a lot of things done for the kids, because.
I agree.
What's over there now is, they don't have the best equipment.
I agree.
Okay? So I think it's time we get a stop sitting on money.
I don't think that Bob Lathrop approached the town with a wish list.
I, 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 I'll, I'll take you back. He showed me invoices that he sent to the Town Administrator. I'll get them for you if you like them.
That'd be great.
I'll get them for you.
I haven't.
But he sent them out.
That would be great, thank you. Do you anticipate that it would be on the warrant for your next meeting, though? I would hope so. What's, who, who does that? Who sets the warrants?
It's a combination of the Town Administrator, the Treasurer, and the Chairman.
So would you talk to them about that, or how, how would you push that forward?
Well, I know, I have talked to them about it. I know it is moving forward. I just don't know. I mean, in theory, it could be in the warrants that we will sign tonight at the end of the meeting. So if I read those warrants, I will know, but.
Well, does Ellen know? I have the warrants here. If you'd like to read them.
I would rather move on with the meeting. So if there are no further citizens' concerns, I'm gonna move to correspondence. We have a letter. We have a letter, we have letters from George Kakes, the Scout Master, from Rowley. And we have, I believe, Matthew W. Miller, who's becoming Eagle Scout on, oh, that was February. That was already fast. But I believe in February 28th, he became this, and we also have Luke Daniel Medevier, who also became an Eagle Scout, and I believe we should send letters to both of those people.
So long.
All those in favor?
Aye. Good to see you.
We have a letter from the Triton Regional School District with this year's operating budget. If anyone's interested in seeing that, you can access it through the Selectmen's office or see it online. And then we have another letter from Xfinity. And it's a nice, long letter.
Get out.
Talking about their services, their programs, explaining your bill. Anyone who's interested in it is welcome to access it. We have the March 12 meeting minutes.
I'll postpone till progress.
I have to stay with that.
Second?
They can't go on.
Can't go on. Okay, so we are gonna postpone those for the next meeting?
I move to save the minutes for the next meeting.
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have warrants.
Motion to sign warrant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any meeting updates? Is there, just communication meeting? Since last we met?
I wonder if it went in Rowley.
I thought it went in Triton. Okay.
No, I think that one's coming.
That one's coming?
I want to say May, or April, rather, April.
Okay. All right, no meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.